Now being recorded. Welcome, everyone, to the April 10th, 2013 City Council Finance Subcommittee. First agenda item for anyone here that knows we are recording this meeting. And our first item of business are the minutes from March 13th.
Want to approve?
Second?
I've read them.
I've read them also without any further discussion. Clearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
That's why I don't have to type over.
Mayor's communication. Melissa, you have anything you want to say in the mayor's absence? Public speak. Club members of the public here. Moving on to our agenda, new business. Request for Mass General Law 59, Section 5K Senior Work Off Program. I'll turn it over to Councillor Cobb to enlighten us as to what he's proposing.
I'll start with this. There was a recent article in Gazette concerning West Springfield that just has gone through the same process that I was taking. And in this case, while there seems to be a lot of information here, all I'm truly interested in at this time is just voting to accept the legislation. Because there's the pretense if we decide to develop a program, there's going to be a certain level of ordinance or administrative code you have to write, someone has to manage it. You have to define the limits in the, what we're doing here, etc., etc.
So wait, you're saying if we approve, if we accept the law, it's still not enforced until we write new ordinances to define it, who's going to manage it, etc.
Well, at that point, it becomes up to the, there's a law that's accepted by the city. It becomes up to the executive office or the administration to actually perform a request to, or, well, I guess the city council to do, to include, develop the ordinances to define the, who qualifies, what qualifications work, and the amount, the number of...
So if the city's executive branch does not want to use this, they can choose not to. The next mayor may want to. We don't have to go through this voting.
Right.
But it is, there's a check and balance in that we can't force this on the executive without them having some say. In other words, there's an ordinance that has to be... Where does it say?
I think it's under C.D. under page three. That's where I found it. Says after acceptance of this.
After approval, there moves.
That is after acceptance statute, then it's up to the selectmen town council or mayor with the approval of the city council to establish the work, work off program.
It says or, it doesn't say and. Or, mayor. But where does it say that we have to have an ordinance?
A little further down. Any local rules which we don't have, procedures that was maybe adopted by law ordinance.
We don't have any of that.
So you have to adopt them. Okay. So you have to do something because you've got to define the number of positions, the, or up to the number of positions, you have to define where, what it's coming from, you have to define, you know, those type of eligibility requirements. Like in West Springfield, they defined it as a certain segment of our senior population plus veterans.
But all of those definitions have to be developed. Plus you have seven enforcement, which is payroll, which is Melissa says her office, which is a lot of extra work because each of these employees, new employees, have to be run through payroll, correct? Or think.
That's the way I understand it.
Because they're employees, even though they're, even though they're doing it in a kind of a, in lieu of taxes kind of thing, they're still considered employees, right? That's how I see it, judge it. And it even says in this, you have little blue thing here that you're, that they get at least minimum wage, maximum 125 hours.
They're close to payroll, but they're not classified as employees in terms of benefits.
I know, but they still have to be accounted for. There's accounting going on. Has to be that office. I'm not prepared to have that workload on, however, maybe a future mayor would want. But if you had asked me the second step to write an ordinance to define this, I wouldn't vote for it this year. That's just my opinion. I don't think we could afford it, number one. Number two, I'd like to hear, I think there's a hell of a lot of detail that has to go into it if we're going to do it. And that detail must be worked out with the administration because the administration's going to be organizing it, right? We have to be careful.
I agree we have to be careful.
I mean, I don't agree, I don't disagree with the notion. It just seems so common. Why does it have to be so common? We don't want some rich senior getting out of paying taxes because they're picking up garbage on the street.
Well, he could. The other idea is if I were to propose this, the letters of recommendation I would get would be from the board of assessors because generally where the funding comes from is the, Melissa's going to help me out here, what's that?
You think it comes from overlay?
From the overlay account.
Is that what Mass General Law says?
No, but that's where it was proposed in a number of communities that I've looked at, which of course this year would have been bad.
Uh, yeah.
So if we don't have an overlay account, then if we used it all.
But let me finish in the council agency because they might end up having to administer it without their support, it should go forward again. That said, just because the ordinance says, you can write any ordinance, that is, so that one year we have money, our overlay, to fund something like this, we can fund, we can control the number of positions. If we have no money, we can choose not to fund. So even if there's an ordinance that allows us to obtain stuff, based on where we're at.
I mean, I, I've read, in fairness, fairly quickly through this, but the overall idea, I have no problem with it. I mean, I think it's certainly a worthwhile idea. I do think the logistics would be a lot of work. I mean, there's a lot of questions, I mean, like these employees do pick up the, you know, the torque, I mean, does it increase our insurance costs by adding new employees? I mean, I don't know, how do you pick, how do you pick how many jobs?
They would be included on employment filings.
That what?
They're going to be on quarterly employment filings.
I guess these are the questions I would have to kind of like to know a little before we move too far down the road.
I mean, it's not a lot of money. It's like a sub, you know, they're, they're in, they're out, but you know, you've got to report them everywhere as employees.
The instances that are also, I've already been well vetted. Is that, have this in place already? And how they've been operating? I would like to know how they're, and are there any community, well, West Springfield's a little bit bigger than a hospital. They're a city. They're the most recent. They're following the same model that I was going to follow, was, you know, top legislation that puts a tool, toolbox, and then if this mayor or the ex-mayor that went after that decides that it's a good deal, we need to push forward on this program. They can.
They still have to put forward an ordinance to define the...
Right, which is what they did.
They did that in West Springfield. I mean, are they actually acting on this now? Seniors are working off taxes now?
They've just, I know they voted the ordinance. I don't know if they've hired any seniors yet.
I just noticed reading Mansfield's programs, whether you got them or somebody Barbara got them, I don't know who got them.
You can see how they have their ordinance set up.
Like, there's a setup where, I don't, yes, further indeed.
Kind of like Mansfield or...
You know, they have like, each city has different qualifications. Like in Mansfield, it just said you have to be a senior over 60, you have to own property. But then when you go to Lancaster, you have to be a resident for, a Massachusetts resident for 10 years, not just a resident of Lancaster. I mean, so I guess it's probably wide open.
So there's a lot of things you can write into.
It must be pretty wide open of what you could write into these ordinances. I mean, that's why I said it would take...
And also in Lancaster, you list the jobs that you're allowed to do.
Allowed to do, that's why I said it's a lot, it would be a, I mean, and I, again, I know Melissa's, you know, I don't want her to have to speak for the mayor, but I don't think in the past, this particular mayor has been particularly anxious to get on this road. I mean, I don't too. But again, I know maybe there's the next mayor, what? I'm not, again, and again, it's not, it's not a worthwhile program because it certainly seems to be.
Right, I was going to say, it's not that it's not a worthwhile program, it's that...
Go ahead.
I mean, why do that and why not just increase the senior abatement? You know, because the cost is going to be the same with no administration over.
That's a thought, that's a thought. But that abatement is only given to, you're talking about property tax abatement, that's, well, that's what this is.
You can, I, in the past, I've seen this written as you have the income, the way it was presented to me the last time was that you had to income qualify to get the job too. You couldn't...
So you had to income qualify to get a tax abatement and we could, and we were thinking of raising that if the override came in. But that hasn't, but she's right, it has no override, no administration to that.
Well, there is, I mean, there's still the assessors.
The assessors, but you're not doing payroll.
Right, and we're not, they're not hiring them, we're not sending them up.
We have to establish an income, an income, a way to trigger this.
That some of the other communities have, we need to find that.
Why not, but, but Justin, just thinking about it, why not just try to go for the abatement? What's the difference? We could raise the abatement like we were going to do. I mean, if we wanted to do something, we could do that, we don't have to accept this chapter and then there's no, we're giving seniors the same benefit.
The city, there's no trade off, the city gets no benefit back.
Are you talking about the employment?
I guess, Justin, what would be your, what would be your vision for what type of jobs we would, we would, you know, in how many, you know, how many jobs? And then how, again, these are the questions I have, how many jobs and, you know, I know there's like...
Looks like Lancaster, looks like what we would do.
There's an employment, some had, where you had to turn in your finances, some didn't, so some there would be no, you know, anyone 60 over, no matter how much they had could have applied.
My vision was not for anyone 60 and over. It was to look at the data that's out there for other communities and give the plan for this community to get that detailed. Look at the data that's out there for the other communities and see which one is closest to our ideal of actually funding those who actually are on some level of hardship or in need, not necessarily based on income. And how you actually define it, that's embedded in those, those committees too. It was also the number of positions, you know, the concept I was coming up with was up to, so that if one year we only want to hire one individual because the department managers will put forth their suggestions. And then it's up to the executive office to say, okay, well, I've got 15 positions, I only want two.
Where there's no legal discrimination or anything, if you just decide, okay, we have five positions, we're going to fund this, we're going to try and do this year, that's it. Maybe in prior years we did, maybe there's 15 on the books, but we're only going to fund five. We're not discriminating against other income eligible seniors by not hiring those other 10 positions because we've decided, it's a position, so we have the right to decide what positions we want to hire through this tax abatement program. It's just like any other employment, I would imagine.
No, it's more...
We have, we have jobs on the books now that we're not filling. So we have 10 jobs, okay, we come up with 15 jobs, but the executive can decide, well, we're only going to fill five this year. We can write it that way.
Yes.
I mean, if you look at the Lancaster one, there's like, they have all jobs there. They want to try, maybe because they want to, they want to test this administrative overhead.
Well, these are...
Right, if you want to test it, let's just do five, see what happens. See how much our work is, see how it works out. See, my feeling is, they're going to do the work. If we're going to prove this, we have to write an ordinance that gives them a lot of leeway to decide whether or not they can do it. It's too much work. I mean, I think...
Well, the other thing too is then, you know, at that point, then you're giving abatements in a sense, or the work off, to people who are most qualified to work.
Well, if you're over 65 in your...
That's all municipal program.
But his, his idea is at least we're getting something out of it. We're getting work done that you might have to hire someone at a lot higher than minimum wage.
You don't hire them, these are not, nobody's, you can't hire them to fill an empty position. You get a union grievance on that, day one.
Well, what if it's a non-community position? Pay plan position. It's not, I mean, if it's a position that doesn't exist, but it's work that, we have people that are overworked and now we have filing that needs to be done and we want someone to file and this person can come in, maybe they're a retired clerk.
Ultimate paperwork in the store on downstairs.
You're trying to, I mean, come on, I hate to do that to a senior, boy.
I don't know, I don't know that you want someone who doesn't know what that is to go through that stuff. That's why it hasn't been done.
You don't know who you're going to, there are some incredibly talented experienced seniors out there.
I know there are.
They do that quite well. But, you know, those are the examples, you know, am I looking for someone to drive a snowball? No, I'm looking for someone to drive, absolutely not, more looking for light duty type of...
Maybe they could drive the senior abatement if that's allowed, I don't even know if that's legal. But I'm just saying, there's our, that's what people do, like the seniors that are at the car dealerships, driving you back to work. So that's, that's what they do. They make a little extra money or they're at Walmart greeting you. I mean, what you're saying is we could come up with something simple like that.
But it still has to be funded, so if you're going to fund something, then hire someone.
But we're funding it through tax abatement, we're not funding it as a permanent job and we can decide each year whether or not we want to do it. Again, this is all hypothetical because we're going to give the administra, I would never sign off on any of this without giving the administration a lot of leeway to decide, A, if they want to do it, and B...
Which is the model I'm approaching, is that we accept the legislation and then we end it at that point, so we allow the administration then to, let's say, drive the bus if they choose to do so in the future. About the executive branch.
I, I'm of the opinion, I'd like at least one more meeting to kind of go through this. And, you know, you mentioned a lot about West Springfield, we don't really see much here on West Springfield.
No, it just came up.
And I kind of like to see what they're doing, just if, if they could send us anything and what they, that'd be my thing. I guess I'd just like one more, again, and I guess I'd like to get a little more, and I think Dan brought it up earlier, of, I think what I'm hearing from you, Justin, and what I read is we could approve this just as something that could be done, but I guess I'd like to kind of get it.
Well, I think if we adopt the legislation, anybody can propose an ordinance, but if there has to be an ordinance, it has to be approved by the city council and...
And the executive.
And the executive. Now, the city council could try an ordinance and the city council deciding, we don't care about the administration thinks, we're going to pass the ordinance and the ordinance is going to say, this is a future city council, we'll pass by eight votes.
So it has to be funded.
I think you can play hardball anytime. We're not going to pass your budget unless you're funded, I mean, you can do that. To me, I'd like to, I'm back and forth on that.
I'd just like another, at least one more meeting to kind of read through it a little slower and the different towns. Again, I, I would only really, I mean, I'd like to see if...
And I kind of agree. I'd like to hear from those towns, how's it working? How much work is it, those treasurers or payroll people? What's it like? Because if we're going to say it's too much work, I'd like to have some...
It's also a little like the term. Some of these towns may have, have a staff that just deals with this, they want to program, where we might be taking one employee and overturning them to run this program. So that's hard to say.
Well, like, to put one new employee in, it's not a huge deal, but then, you know, you own them, you're responsible for them, you have a, you have a P C W two, you have to report them to all the...
And they're subject to workman's comp rules. They're working for the city, right?
They're in the building using your equipment, yeah.
So you have all those, that overhead to get a look at. So we have to pay insurance on the person.
It says that they, for the purpose, you know, taxpayer performing services and return of tax, are employees for purposes of municipal tort liability, so certainly you're picking up...
Municipal tort liability? Tort, I love that word, right?
So if they do something wrong, you know, we have to cover what they do wrong.
That word should be...
Municipalities will therefore be, will be liable for damages, for injuries to third parties, and for indemnification of the volunteers the extent that they are in the case injured caused by a regular, you know, if they're injured, is caused by a regular employee. So if they're working with a regular employee and they're injured, we'd have to...
But what I'm saying is even if you write the ordinance in a recertain way, then, then the application process for that person is, is more lengthy than getting a job here, you know, essentially, you know, because all of a sudden you got to, you got to produce some kind of need, you got to ask age, which is, you know, a little weird. You know, well, you don't ask that in a job interview.
I could say one...
Right? You can't, you can't ask age in a job interview, I think you can't ask that.
Well, it's a senior exemption, what's the definition of a senior, over 50?
Well, whatever you define it to be.
Is that us or is that defined by some law?
See, Lancaster's application, which is on near the end, again, I'm not picking on Lancaster, but they ask your age, your date of birth, your homeowner's files, then you get into your gross income.
Well, senior tax exemption, is a senior 60 years old? Who defines senior in this country? Is the federal government defined it someplace?
I think it's that's, that's in the legislation.
It's defined in the legislation, 60-year-old.
Sixty-year-old, so that's not age discriminatory for, you have to be 60 to go apply.
I don't know, but isn't there also, are you guys going to accept the one where, isn't that, isn't that law now say that someone else can work in their place?
Yes, it says that, and then you have to deal with that with the federal government, that's what this is here.
You have to deal with the federal government either way.
I do want to remember reading something, I don't know if the slides are listening on. Yeah, it should be double checked.
Because it was part of the Municipal Relief Act, that someone could work in your place, so you can, whatever.
I'd like to hear from other towns and see if it's a...
Because that, that part is new.
Yeah, this, this one just came about.
You ever ask that, update, yeah.
Aside from West Springfield, Justin, to your knowledge, is there anybody else close that...
Amherst, Holyoke, South Adelaide, Chichepee.
They're all south.
Yes.
Really?
I don't know if you have time, but I don't know.
If they do, it wasn't in place now.
No, that wasn't...
Well, we ought to find out from those communities. I'd like to hear point blank from the people administering it, what's it like? How many jobs have they given out and what's it like? I mean, I think from, on the surface, it's a, it's a nice thing, it's a good thing to do.
I agree with you.
On the other hand, it's work.
I don't want a burden to...
We're already, you know, we're under, already understaffed and adding more burden to us. But you're right on one thing, you're giving the executive the chance to make the decision. Although, as I said, any ordinance can be, if we pass an ordinance that says you will do this, objections of a mayor, you know, get overriding a veto, they still have, they have to do it.
You have to find one that you doesn't have?
And you can just not fill the positions too.
That's true.
He or she.
As I said, hardball can be played a lot of ways. It gets nasty after that. I would never want to force this, I'm just saying, I'm not going to force this on any administration that thinks it's too much.
Right, which is, you know, why the concept of just adopting legislation, is the way to go.
We can adopt the legislation anytime, why not adopt it when everybody's on board with it?
What if that never happens? That's, it's an extra step.
You just want a legacy here, that's what we need, just get this out of here. I think it's good.
Anyway, I...
Well, can I ask, why not write the, why not, why not write the guidelines of it and adopt it at the same time? Why, why do the two things separately?
Well, we want, well, the second thing, the second step is an ordinance, it's different than adopting this. You have to write an ordinance. If we're going to write an ordinance, then it goes through the regular mill of ordinance adoption and the mayor has a right to object to it or...
That's correct.
I wouldn't vote for it unless, I would say right now that unless, well, not this administration, but the future administration, I would want to make sure they're on board, that they feel they can do it.
Well, I mean, I guess why I'm saying putting them together as opposed to separate is you can write the ordinance as tight or as loose as anyone chooses. So if you adopt that and you write an ordinance that says, hire people, and that's all it says, then what? You know? So I, I kind of think maybe if you want to do it, do it parallel, you know, or is that, am I not thinking about that right?
Well, what is your intent right now, to adopt, to now elect the next administration?
Just adopt it so it's in place and if the next administration wants to...
But it doesn't mean we can't come up with, go on to the meeting, come up with, follow through with these cities so we can have data that shows these communities.
Well, I'd like to have that before I move on this, like Dan says, I'd like to, I'd like to...
So there's a table just for the...
At least the next...
There's some information on the shelf in case somebody wants to...
I'd like to find out how hard it is for those people to administer this kind of program. You know, they may have, and when you ask the, who's going to ask the questions? You, Justin?
I can make an attempt.
You know, even if, you know, if it's a... What I'd like to know is if you call Amherst, how many people are in their, their finance?
I can, I know people in Amherst, I'll tell them all. Do they have one in Amherst?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, fine, but do they have the same amount of people that you do? I mean, they probably have more than the office, right?
Yeah, and their payroll's run through a different department than mine, but I still know them, right?
I'd just like to see how it's administered in a couple of little rooms.
You should call Amherst.
Screening them and, you know, like, what's their process?
Why don't you call West Spring...
Thomas, South Adelaide, you didn't say South Adelaide, I mean, somebody about our size, that would be more...
Who's got it besides?
Did you say South Adelaide?
Amherst?
You said Holyoke, Chickopee.
There's Holyoke, Chickopee here in West Springfield. Like, three, because I know they're...
Holyoke and Chickopee are too big to be inadequate, because they have more people on the payroll to administer this kind of...
You asked that question?
Huh?
That's one of the questions asked, do you have someone whose sole job is to administer this program?
For a smaller community like us, we could examine, is it a burden on how smaller the office staff?
Amherst doesn't, I mean, they, they pick up more money than we do, but they...
They're not that much bigger.
They're not ultimately that much bigger than us.
We can see, you know, you might think West Springfield's not as big as you do.
I just don't know, I just don't know that.
So are we... I'll, I'll make, I'll go with West Springfield, I'll make contact here.
And will you check a little bit, ever see how they do it?
Absolutely, yep.
And maybe we'll revisit it the next meeting, if that's okay with everyone, we'll table it to the next meeting. We'll table the next one you're at, Justin. Okay? So we need a motion on that, or is it...
No, because there's nothing to hold on.
Okay, so we'll table that to the next meeting, Justin's at. So you won't be at the meeting if we set one for the 24th, if you... So then we'd be like May 1st, that'll be... That'll give us actually, that'll give us a month.
All of my notes are gone. Okay, so, let's see if it turns the page. I can, should just start the way I always do it.
Okay, our second item of business is supplemental funding bond request for $422,838 for an ambulance and a dump truck. Let me see if I can find that here. I guess I'll open it up a little to Melissa here to, I know this is a whole new way we to fund something, correct? We've never used this before.
We have not, this is my bad idea, you can blame me for it, but my, my idea with these bigger ticket items was that, you know, sometimes you can't always pay cash for everything and so in order to spread those, that capital purchase over time, you know, we fund part of it this year from cash and then borrow next year and then fund, and then the next year you have to build into the budget to try, I'm trying to build a, a capital plan based on spending that's consistent, and, and this is my idea of like, well, we're going to spend X number of dollars every year on capital and it's, you know, it's in the budget and when it goes away the next year, it can either stay in the budget as borrowing or it can be cash outlay. And I'm just trying to put it in there. And this is my way to do like the, the things like an ambulance where it's not $100,000, several hundred thousand, and the dump truck as well. Wait, and then, you know, one year we've got to buy two vehicles for the police department Wait, and then, you know, one year we've gotta buy two, um, vehicles for the police department or a vehicle, then you just, maybe you don't borrow that year, you just, you know, but it's just forcing, uh, forcing a percent, I'm trying to, you know, the, you know, what they recommend is that you spend a certain amount of capital. And we've always done capital from free cash when we don't borrow for it, which is great. But this, we can fund part of it this year and part of it next year. If we pay off the whole thing next year because our free cash is high, that's great too. But I wanna have a, a defined amount that we spend every year on capital.
If we do this, what's the interest like in this bond?
Three to four.
So like.
Be less than short term.
Usually is.
If you pay an offer in two years, it's probably very little interest or, or won't pay.
But I think the goal here is instead of saying taking, in this case here, uh, taking four hundred thousand out of free cash one year.
And only buying one item.
And buying these items that are listed here. What we would do is we would, we would capitalize. And so we would bond and pay a little bit of interest and spread that cost for as long as the bond, short term borrowing.
Right. I, all this stuff, well, these are, vehicles have to be five years or less.
Right.
And so that means that every five years you can do this again.
So.
What's five years or less to bonding?
Yeah, because a vehicle's a vehicle.
So we'd be using, so.
So we're only allowed to borrow on a five-year term, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
So we'd be paying like a hundred thousand dollars over every, once a year for five years. Or if we are, if we're healthy, if our free cash is healthy enough, we could pay it all off early.
Correct.
And move on and recapitalize and stay with the same type of program.
Is this a common thing, Melissa, for cities our size?
It's common for cities to have capital, like a percentage of their budget. You know, well, we spend three percent on capital every year. This, this is how they did it in North Hampton. This is something I'm mimicking from them. And they would borrow every year so that that part of the budget stayed, um, you know, the same funding amount. So, you know, it's a hundred thousand dollars was no, you know, like, as a hundred thousand rolled off because we didn't have to make that payment anymore because that truck was paid for. They put a new truck on. Borrowing is not the, the best way necessarily. I'm just trying to, to put in our capital plan a funding stream. And this seemed a very small way to say that, you know, we're gonna spend a hundred thousand dollars every year at a minimum on these type of projects because I can make them in hundred thousand dollar payments.
In a sense, we do much more than in a year. It just does this free up additional free cash for purposes.
I guess I have a, a little bit of a philosophical problem.
That's, and Mike has it too. It's fine.
He does? He's in favor of it?
Well, I mean, I'm just saying it almost sounds like, you know, we're, we're going out and spending more than we're, we're taking in and, and again, I, um.
Well, that's how everybody buys a car. When you buy a car, you buy it for three years.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but I, you know, again, I, I just have a little bit of a problem. We've never done it before. And again, um, we have had, you know, again, I know this is to the point of an override because it's very short, but the people did speak on, on the override that they didn't want to borrow any more money and.
Yeah, but that, now that's a totally different thing.
Well, is it, or is it?
It is because you're asking them to pay more taxes. We're not asking for anything.
You're trying to put it in, inside.
We're using it within the budget we have now. We're trying to use our good bonding position to bond capital projects.
Yeah, thank you.
Decent, not good.
Not good.
Now, there are two or three levels of bonus. And the, the top level, we can get at it.
In any case, bonding position that allows us to purchase items, we'd have to wait until we have excessive amounts of free cash. Now, if we wait on that and we need a fire truck that costs four hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna buy that one item that one year. Might have three police cars we need, but we can't get. This allows us, if I understand the process, this allows us to buy that fire truck in a hypothetical situation. Yet still have free cash to purchase other smaller capital items.
Allows us to build up our free cash, build up our stabilization.
Okay.
And, well, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be done in a borrowing way. In this way, we don't, we don't have it, but I, um, I, I did, ultimately, my goal is to somehow separate in our budget every year, this is what we spend on capital that isn't reliant solely on that free cash number. That, that, we have to plan every year that we're gonna spend X amount of dollars. And that, you know, and this was a way to sort of force that hand, I guess. You know, because we're gonna have to.
The idea is this, there, there, you know.
And I have to say that this, if you were to approve this, would not be borrowed this year. So this is something that would be borrowed for in fourteen and, you know, the, the payment would be in fifteen.
The, uh, am I, I'm thinking through this. This is how, what I thought about. I said, yes, what we're actually doing is, this is where, also, Iggy is correct. We're spending a little more than what it would actually cost if we had the money in front. So we're borrowing, it's the cost of borrowing. The other part is that the world has evolved and that the things that we could afford in our free cash at one time are now becoming increasingly difficult to actually afford anymore. Find a different way to actually fund those purchases. Is, because if this were long-term borrowing, I don't, I think I would have a greater concern for short term.
I do have to say though, that this authorization, although, you know, my plan was for short term and even if, when you vote to authorize, it's a bond authorization. And whether I bond or, you know, it could be locked in. I mean, you couldn't borrow for more than five years because those are the borrowing rules of the state. I mean, I can't go around that.
For short term.
But, but, you know, for borrowing for these types of items.
Yes, okay, okay.
But when you authorize it, you're offering, authorizing me to bond. And, you know, if it was an item that could go for twenty years, then I could, you know what I mean? That's not my, my plan, but I just, I don't wanna.
When we authorize you to borrow, we're authorizing you to borrow this amount? Or are you getting authorization to bond every year, whatever we need?
No, borrow this amount for these two items.
That's all we're authorized, right now?
Yes.
So I don't understand, I don't understand what you just said because it sounded like.
Well, he's, he's saying.
You could, you could borrow it in the future.
He's, he's saying it's short, short term. And, you know, I can do a short term note, but I can also, you know, do a permanent bond, a five-year thing that, that I can't pay off early. You know, a note, a note rolls over every year and you can pay it off early. A bond, I'd, I'd be locked into a five-year schedule. And I'm just saying, the authorization does not, the authorization does not, I mean, I'd have to.
It could be borrowing or bonding at the authorization.
Vehicles I know are five years. Ambulants might have a longer life. You know, there are rules for every type of vehicle.
But my only concern on that, and I think you're, you're fiscally responsible, is the amount of interest we start paying if we bond throughout more than five years. You'd be careful.
But I just, I don't want, he keeps saying short term, but there's nothing limiting about this vote. And I, I just, I don't wanna misrepresent that in any way.
I, I guess I'm still a little confused because if we're gonna borrow, if I understand this, you, you, you want to appropriate four hundred and twenty-two.
Some of it we're paying.
Some of your pay in, out of the ambulance is like ninety-two, correct? And then some, some out of free cash.
Right.
So that's about one thirty-five. So we're going over two hundred the first year. And you, we keep talking about a hundred thousand and, and I guess that's where I'm getting a little confused.
That was a hypothetical number. I came up with that.
But I got that from Melissa, that she wants like, like a hundred thousand kinda ongoing.
The two, the two ninety is three years, a hundred thousand dollar payment.
I see. That's how you're doing it.
You know, and slightly more because you're gonna have interest on that. But, um, but, you know, to sort of, to, to block in there, this is what we, you know, this is what we do. Because if we, let's just say, if our free cash was a little higher last year than it had been last year, there was a couple of years we had free cash around five hundred thousand dollars. You buy these two things, you're done.
Right, so, you know, then we're at a stabilization from a, from an emergency. Which is okay, but.
But that's what it's for.
But don't you guys see that the other trap that we could get in if you start, okay, we got the ambulance and the dump truck this year, and then next year, well, why don't we throw on, uh, three police cruisers? And then the next year we throw on, and then suddenly.
But every year we have the right to say no.
My, my plan.
Right, but I, I just, again, I, I, I have a, a problem.
My, my plan honestly was not to, um, not to throw on another one next year, but to throw on one three years from now when this is paid for.
Right, that, that's what you're saying. Not, I, I truly believe that's your intent, but I mean, you know, assuming we got a new mayor, then maybe that's not the new mayor's intent.
Okay.
Yeah, but the point I'm trying to make is this founding authorization is for this amount for these items. We're not giving her complex to borrow anytime she wants. She has to come back to us.
No, but you know how things, and again, I'm, I agree with what you're saying, people here, but once something gets in place, you know, it's like, I've seen a lot of programs are in place that.
How will it be abused by people who are at this?
Once things are in place, it's a lot easier to, to, uh.
It can only be abused if we let them. And if, if the future council is that blind and allows abuse of this kind of a program, that's their problem. I, I think we're responsible enough to know that if it came back for another borrowing next year for five hundred thousand dollars, wait a minute, we just gave you four twenty-two.
Well.
I, 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 my point on this is, we can't fund these big things. I'm in favor of this because I think it is a way to fund things that we're not having to wait a long time to get through the capital fund projects. If you need to spend this kind of money.
To me, it's, it's a stable way to actually plan some of our, our capital, our capital replacements.
We know, is this another way to look at it? Melissa, we know we could, if we don't get a lot of free cash next year, we can still maybe purchase because we have this bonding authorization. I mean, as a way, how, how do you plan? I guess what I'm missing is this allows us to purchase larger items whenever we do this. But it does, and it guarantees that we can buy them now.
No, it's not bonds.
I don't think you can. And that's why I, that's why I wanted to make that clarification. I, I will ask that question, but I don't think you can. I think when you give, and, and so that's why when you kept saying that, I, that is my intent, absolutely, but I, I didn't, you know.
Because that'd be the idea on a long-term thing. We could end up paying twice for the same vehicle just, just because of interest. That's not, in my mind, smart money at that point.
Right. No, I know. I, I mean, I can, um, I can talk to the, I can talk to them and see if I, if we, we can even write it such a way that it's limiting. But I don't, I don't know.
But it was limiting now. You're only borrowing for these items. It's specific to these items, isn't it?
Right, but like in the future, like, uh, there are some items, like a fire truck has a longer life than an ambulance. You know what I mean? And so how, I don't know how many years, you know, each thing has a, a length that they allow you to borrow for. So some stuff goes out longer than others. I know vehicles, so I'm pretty sure about the truck is a five-year max. But, um, you know, but I know that a fire truck is longer.
So.
Because it's, you know, it's usable life. It can't, you can't borrow for it longer than.
You're going to pay off this bond, maybe it's in three years, maybe it's a little longer, using free cash from future years. Because where would you fund? You can't fund it from the regular budget. We don't have this kind of extra cash. You'd have to fund it hoping that free cash comes in enough to pay this off.
To pay one hundred at a, one hundred at a time. And then if I can build it into the budget without free cash, then I, then I would. But I think you're right. When, when, after this goes through and the free cash comes in, the first request I'll have is to set aside for the payment for next year.
I don't understand when we're looking for bucks to keep people from being laid off, how we could fund this out of the free cash to pay it off in the future. I mean, I just.
Not, not.
I understand the need to do it because now I'm, you're, you're, you're relying in a sense on the free cash that we usually use for capital expenses coming forward so we can make a purchase. Knowing that we're gonna have free cash every year. We have a history of that.
It becomes an interesting question because of the way free cash is certified and we only get to use it in the fall time. How would you budget it? How would you come forward with a request?
I would come forward with a capital request to pay against this project as soon as free cash was authorized, but not for the full paydown, but for the first hundred thousand, you know, the first payment. And then set aside and it would be available in the cap, you would vote it, vote it from free cash to this capital project, therefore available to pay that capital project.
See, see, I'm okay with it because we've had good free cash returned the last few years.
If we don't have it, I'm gonna have to find it in the budget.
Or stabilization. But that's what, that's the same thing with other things you buy. But the point I'm trying to make, Dan, is we don't get to buy this stuff at this large quantity of capital without this kind of a program. If we don't have this program in place, we have to be prepared one year to pay a lot of money for one item and then not get anything else.
Right, I understand.
And I, I know that's happened in the past.
We've about, we've done that for the thirteen years that the city's been established.
You haven't bought many things, though.
Well, I mean, we bought, these ambulances aren't thirteen years old, so we bought ambulances.
Actually, they, um, the last ambulance was rebuilt, if I recall. That's what we spent quite a bit of money on.
Put the new box on.
Right. Um, I, I intend to propose it a different way if it makes you more comfortable. You know, Valerie told me about the way she does it in, um, her hometown. And they have a capital stabilization. The problem with that is if you don't fund it, it's not there to buy the truck, you know? And I have to say that these two particular, Dave, since the day I got here, has been looking for me. And I know it's not that long, but, you know, you know, he was looking before I got here.
Is that the total of, um, in the ambulance fund?
Yes, it is.
That ninety-two?
And how much does an ambulance cost?
Two, two twenty-five.
So it takes a while to get it up there.
With the cardiac monitors.
Yeah, just, I estimate up to twenty-five.
See, here's where I'm going with this, is if I knew that we were gonna get so many dollars free cash, because that's my source of money. Because that's a, that's mostly used for one-time purposes in my mind. And when we use it for an operational expense, it's with the understanding it's one time kind of thing. And.
It's, it's the money you have. That's the other thing.
But the idea is, is that's as predictable as my IRA accounts.
Right, it is.
Okay, so it doesn't allow us to control our, or to plan out our capital expenses. And some of those capital expenses, and ambulance is a good one, fire truck's another one, the cost is so astronomical that to buy it outright, which is what we have been doing and have been successful at it, is slowly gonna become unsustainable.
Well, you're, you're basically saying, we could, we could spend the money we have in our pocket and, and buy items one at a time with cash. But this is the way most people buy large capital items, a car, over three years. You're spending money based on the fact that you have future earnings you're relying on. We have a, we have a good history of free cash. And I don't think it's dangerous to try a program like this because then we're not hurting ourselves. In those years, we have to buy an ambulance. What if suddenly we do need two or three police cars? Oh, suddenly we have to use stabilization because we have to get them because suddenly, uh, you know, they die or, or something else comes up.
The sewer line blows out by that.
Well, that's what you have to use that for. But at least this way, we're spreading a large cost over a few years rather than spending it all at once. And it gives us the freedom, I'm in favor of it, Dan, I think it works out.
If, if in the next three years we need a fire truck, Dan, where, where does that go? Now we need another three or four hundred thousand. Do we just take another short term?
What do we have? What do we start with?
Do we take another short term loan and go out another three years? Now we're out five years and we, and we haven't paid off the, the item from three years ago? I mean, again, I think this is how governments have gotten in trouble in the past by, by borrowing money they don't have. Isn't that what the federal government's certainly doing? The state doesn't.
Well, I don't think that's a fair example because they're borrowing money they don't even have or don't even have a way of getting. They're borrowing against future money being printed. I mean, this is money we may not have, but we have a track record of getting every year. And we're not gonna authorize future bonding. I'll give you this. If this screws up.
Well, but Dan, you're saying we're not gonna authorize future bonding. If, if the fire chief comes and says we need a, a new ladder truck two years from now, you tell me how.
We, in this particular case, if he says.
Now you're gonna say, let's take this four hundred thousand.
I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say, we have to pay that off first.
Oh, so we're not gonna have a, a, a ladder truck? You know what I'm saying? This would, would, I'm saying, this is.
We wouldn't buy it now, Dan, because we don't have the money.
But this is gonna be an easy.
The process we have now.
This is gonna be an easy way to say, okay, well, now we'll go out three or five more years on a fire truck.
People bond all the time in government. We bond everything.
No, we haven't bonded.
Well, yeah, that doesn't mean it's right. This isn't.
We haven't done it.
But in this example, but in your example, if we use the current method we have, we may not be buying that fire truck, period.
Ever.
We can never, because they're eight hundred trillion dollars to. Because we don't, we never gather that money. This allows us the opportunity to, instead of shrinking our, our, our free cash or our, our money we can use for capital way down with one or, one or two purchases, we're stabilizing a certain percentage of that over time so that we can have the ability to afford, if we want to, another big item.
Well, but I have to look at it from my personal part.
But the interest is big money too.
The interest is big money, but it, but I look at every, every three years, if I'm gonna buy a car every five years, I'm gonna look at what I, what's my situation then? And I'm gonna trust myself that I'm gonna look at my expenses rational. And I believe that we need to trust the fact that we're not stupid. We have, we have some financial responsibility here. Now, giving this bonding authorization to Melissa to do this one time does not open the door to say, you're saying it opens the door to doing it all the time.
Well, I'm saying.
I, I'm hopeful there are people like you still on the council in the future years who are gonna examine each and every time we do that to say, is it prudent to do it again? I, I don't think this is.
I'm not saying it opens the door to have to do it. I'm saying it makes the, the, it makes it easier to make that decision, you know, once you've done it.
Especially if it worked. If it worked, it's, makes it easier, but we, then we'll have a track record. Did it work?
Right, but unless we need something two years.
And you've done it in other communities, right? Did you say you did it in North Hampton? Did it work? Did you have any trouble with it?
Well, they, they got a big override coming out, Dan, that we don't have. I mean.
Yeah, but they.
It's not because of.
Right, we just said it's working in North Hampton. I'm saying they're not doing everything right.
Because they pay their people too much money or something.
I guess that's true.
We don't know the reason.
We don't know the reason behind. I'm just saying, don't just poo-poo that it's not part of that. I mean, let's look into it, you know? I mean, let's not just make statements that it isn't part of it. I know they're going out for a, a big override in North Hampton. You know, I don't know what they're doing right or wrong over there.
We, we turned it down. This, this is just an idea to help, in this case, it's an idea to help solve something. So if you take.
I mean, we just spent.
So the question becomes, is, is what I think the council is looking at is the propensity for what we want as a stable program to be, to be abused. Because the interest in solving, you know, thirty, fifty grand, regardless of, thirty, fifty grand is still a lot of money. It's, you know, because that, how much the interest from Bay area could be on it over time.
Over the, the three years, sure.
So it, it's still a big chunk of change. So it, it's still a big chunk of change and us to look at us. That's why.
I think that's a lot of money. I mean, I don't.
So, when do we buy the ambulance? We have to do it every year?
We just spent seven, two hundred and sixty thousand last week on public works.
Three hundred and seven.
Three hundred and seven?
The problem, what she's getting at, always all these things we need to.
Those were capital improvements just this year. So can we buy the ambulance and then maybe the dump truck? We just bought two things for the dump trucks. I mean, I, we've operated like this in the past, and I just don't see why. You know, I applaud Melissa for coming up with it. I just philosophically have a hard time. It seems to me we're now gonna head off, um, you know, I won't use the override, but I will use the credit card. In other words, we're gonna take our credit card and spread the payments out over and pay the interest. And I guess if we, if you can pay it cash, you're saving the money and the interest. I mean, you may poo-poo thirty or fifty thousand dollars, but that's a teacher or a fireman.
No, it's not, no, it's not.
Well.
Fifty is, but not thirty.
It's still not. This is one-time money. It means, it means you're gonna hire a teacher for the next year.
I see what you're saying. Free cash can't be used as.
No, I'm not saying that. It's still all in one, you know, one budget, Justin. It's still the city money. I'm not, you know.
Okay, well, if you, I will ask that if you don't wanna approve the borrowing, that you at least move the money into a capital project for these two things so that over time it's big enough to do what we need to do, because these things, we need them.
Yeah, but that's up to the mayor to put forward if all three ones. Well, you can put forward next year. I'm just saying.
But there's, it's a two-part thing. There's three parts to this request, you know?
I misunderstand.
Well, there's.
The mayor already put this forward. He's requesting a certain amount of money and he's requesting.
Two ninety for borrow.
The borrowing part is what you're objecting for.
Well, I mean, yes, right now, I mean, I haven't.
So, you know, do we approve the borrowing one time for this and?
Is there any way to find out what this borrowing is gonna cost us and what the term will be?
Well.
Just three to five years in interest, you're not sure?
I was gonna ban it, which means that it's a different interest rate every year.
Oh, okay.
Unless I put it out for long-term bond, I could do a state house note, uh, and then I could predict the interest rate ahead of time. But you don't know that. You can estimate it. Um, but I figured that it was about, you know, twenty thousand a year, but I figured.
Twenty K a year interest.
Yeah.
On them tonight.
So I, what I'm seeing here is two things going on. First is, this request has a loan, no future application whatsoever. Uh, it doesn't impact the tax rate at this point. It just impacts our existing funding sources. Or the second part is this as the beginning of a program to capitalize our, some of our funds so that we can actually plan our expenses out over time. So there's two things we're looking at right now. So if we look at this seemingly as this loan, borrowing, so we can get these things.
Can I ask another question? We borrow, you guys borrow to fund certain things in the city without, we don't need to authorize borrowing to do it.
And I don't borrow anything without authorization.
We have to authorize, the city council has to authorize.
Everything.
Have a look at it. Yeah, but we done borrowing for certain things.
Well, for the high school.
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about smaller items.
I think so.
Haven't we? No?
No.
That's why I said this is a whole new thing. It's a whole new, a whole new, new way of approaching it, and I think.
We did, we did some borrowing for the hole and the bike path where.
Which was smaller loss, but it's still like six.
Caved in. Um, we did the sewer project, you know?
The sewer project was through enterprise fund. We borrowed for that. We borrowed for that, and the enterprise fund paid it off.
Right, but we borrowed for this building, but mostly it's, it's buildings.
It's for big projects though, too, not smaller projects.
I, I don't know, but I would assume that if he went back far enough, I mean, do we pay cash for those fire trucks?
Well, we had, we bought one big ladder truck and we got a grant from federal government from, um, it's a nine eleven funding grant. We got a lot of money from that to fund the ladder.
I just can't imagine him to do that.
No, we got, we got like almost a million dollars. Do you remember that?
But if we had to.
That was years, that was a few, many years ago, but we did it. That's how we funded it.
To buy one of those.
Well, I don't think, that's another thing. We would have to put it in for debt exclusion to get one of those. That's a million dollars.
What I'm getting at is this, is, is, um, I appreciate you, I really appreciate you coming forward with this because this is for our communities out of box, kind of thinking. Personally, the way we are trying to fund our services, I do not believe it's sustainable. We have to think out of box. This kind of does that in my mind to that. But, uh, you're coming up with hypotheticals of how this could be abused in the future. Now, to a degree, regardless of what our intents are here, there's gonna be other people coming down the line. So there's, there's the question. And there are checks and balances. And that is, is the next borrowing request, which is gonna be based similar to this, on their projected free cash in the fall. And, uh, who we, you know, the one level of use that I can see is, okay, we're gonna, you know, buy a million dollar piece of equipment, only projecting two hundred thousand dollars of free cash. We're gonna suck it all up in one, one piece of equipment. That's like stupid.
That's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen.
There's the potential there.
See, I don't wanna say abuse, Justin. What I think is what you set this up, once you start buying things like this, you know, maybe it's the smaller items.
Precedents.
The precedents, and next year, okay, we buy the cruisers for seventy thousand, and so, well, why should we pay all that upfront? Why don't we put that out for five years too? You know what I'm saying? You know, and it just to me, does it over the years snowball and then suddenly, you know, you look back ten years and you've got a whole heck of a lot of stuff being maybe short-term, obviously short-term, but you've got a whole heck of a lot of stuff you're paying on the city credit card or whatever you wanna call it. I mean, I know what Melissa's trying to do is spread it out, but I mean, again, twenty or thirty thousand dollars in interest on a three hundred thousand dollar borrowing is a lot of money. It's close to ten percent. I mean, over the, over the whole five years, the whole five years of the purchase, you're putting, you know, ten percent of your item into interest. And that's at today's rates that are historically low.
Looking at it.
Who's to say five years from now, if we go out every year, who's to say five years from now, the interest rate isn't six percent or seven percent or ten percent?
Yeah, but I'm also, at the next council, it'll be the same thing with all this B.
Well, but this is this council.
Looking at the current plan, the way we do it now, obviously, the mayor chose to fund the objects we've already paid for. If he wanted to fund this, if this was a higher priority, could have. We could have paid this money out of free cash. And all those items would have to be put aside or a lot of them. Maybe, did we put any money in stabilization? We didn't. Not this year because we have to pay the abatement. Um, so my point is, given that example, if we're gonna spend this kind of money, a lot of those other items, some of which were desperately needed, we have one sewer thing you guys, we just passed, hasn't been fit, changed for years, would be put off if we decide that, and then I guess that's the mayor's prerogative. What are my prerogatives? Spend the money we have now. This allows a service that's needed for the community to be purchased earlier than later and paid for over time like we all do when we borrow. Now, your concern is that fiscal conservatism is okay, is that we borrow, we borrow too much. Governments don't tend to be as careful with their borrowing capability as.
Correct, because they're not borrowing your own, or I guess it's a small portion of your own money.
But we don't have, we don't have anything to base that judgment on. We don't have Melissa, we don't have anything except I believe Melissa is a fiscally conservative. I think she is a conservative treasurer, and I don't think, I'm not taking that big a chance on this if we say, okay. Secondly, because there is a check and balance every year. If we're gonna do this kind of thing every year, we're gonna say, wait, don't we have to pay that off?
Well, that's what you're hoping, Dan, that, I guess, once, once you.
We have to. We have to approve it. It always gets approved.
Yeah, I know it always gets approved.
City council has to approve it. And what you're saying is you don't trust your future city councils.
Well, no, I'm saying I don't trust, once governments get something in place, and you can disagree with me, but once governments get something in place, programs. Think about it, whether you state, local, federal.
But it's not an ongoing program that has to be funded. All right, go ahead.
Once a program's in place, tell me which programs are ever taken away. Government never takes away. Maybe they wouldn't use it as much. But once you put it in place, it's gonna be used, you know? And I could just see next year, oh, this is gonna be a bad year, so have those seventy thousand for the cruisers. Why spend it all this year? Let's spread it out over five years on the seventy thousand. So now we've added in a little more to our short-term borrowing. So, and then the next year, maybe it's something for another department. And I just, to me, it, to me, it's like now we're gonna start operating on a little bit of a credit card. And I know it's tough to buy these objects, but I'm sure the mayor could buy, again, we just spent a lot on dump trucks. Maybe we could put the dump truck off and just buy the ambulance, and I think we could.
We don't know how much free cash we have left.
We don't have enough to.
We don't have much of all, a lot of it's.
What's in it? No, I mean, there's still stabilization. I would pay.
If you took, if you took this forty off, this forty thousand out, like if you, if you approve that to be, to be spent on the ambulance or the truck later.
Right, you need about another hundred thousand, a little under that, like eighty or ninety thousand.
We have, yeah, about a hundred thousand.
So you got it in free cash. I mean, you wanted to use it. I would be more apt to support stabilization to buy the ambulance than I would to borrow. I mean, again, if you.
Yeah, I disagree with.
Well, I'm not saying I wanna spend it anyway, but I think we should, what we, I just, I guess maybe I'm the, as you said, fiscal conservative. If, to me, if you don't have it.
I would agree with the notion that borrowing is a bad way to go if we can avoid it, but I don't agree with the notion that this is a program. Because it's not, we're not establishing, we're establishing a precedent, yes, that we haven't borrowed for this kind of thing in the past. But that doesn't mean it's a program to me that we're always gonna be forced to fund. It's not like the senior citizen center, which is a department we have to fund. We don't fund it, the seniors go bad. It's, I just don't get the analogy there. It's not a program to me. It's a one-time borrowing request. Yes, it sets a precedent that we've borrowed for capital expenses and why can't we do it again? Well, because fiscally it's not feasible this time. I'm not afraid to say that. And I also don't think Melissa will put something forward that she doesn't feel is fiscally viable. And I think, I'm trusting her judgment. I have to be honest. I'm trusting her judgment on this. Um, I see your point, though. I see your point.
I don't want this to be about Melissa, because I don't think it's at all about Melissa. What, you know, I mean, I.
Well, no, it is, because she is putting forward a borrowing program that she feels is safe, right? Am I saying that correctly? You feel it's a safe way to go, that we will be able to fund it in the outlying years, over three years, four years, to free cash. My concern would be, I for one, won't vote for no borrowing until I see how we do with this. I'd like to see if we can pay it off. If you come to us, oh, we're stuck, I gotta take a hundred thousand dollars out of the regular budget to pay this off. I'm not gonna be happy about that, because it means we're taking money away from regular tax revenue that we could be using to fund a fireman or a teacher or something. I'm willing to go with it because I believe she has, it is about, it is about the finance director putting forward a program. A program that the mayor isn't sure he's agreeing, but he's not gonna be here, so he wants her to put it forward. So I'm trusting her judgment. I don't.
Okay, I mean, I, it's twofold, and I, you know, I certainly respect Dan's opinion and we're both赞同. But, um, but I will say this, what I, I did it in a borrowing way, one, because it's, you know, interest rates are lower now. It's less expensive to do this than it would be if it had been ten years ago. And I also did it because we need these items now. But what we do need to improve our bond rating and is a plan, a dedicated stream of money, that this is what we, not a, it's this much this year and that much. I need to be able to say to our reviewers that we spend this amount of money on capital every year to maintain our structure. So.
This establishes a plan that is.
If, I will say that you don't have to agree with it this way, but we have to do a capital funding plan along with a capital plan. And this was my way to do it right now because I didn't have the funds right this way, but, you know, right this minute, and I felt that they were there. But I have to, um, identify a funding stream that is consistent with our, with our budget that we are maintaining our assets.
Now, that's an important point. That's important.
So, so, you know, I totally respect that you don't, you don't agree with this way, but if we don't do it this way, I have to find a different way to, um, make some sort of policy that we, um, have a funding source to buy these things over time, even if it's our own savings bank over time, that we saved for four years to buy a car. You know, if we do it in reverse of this way.
Which I would be whole, support wholeheartedly. If this mayor or whoever the next mayor is sets aside a hundred thousand dollars for capital going forward, then that's our money that's going forward, because certainly could be spent, and we're not spending.
Another capital stabilization fund. You mentioned that earlier.
Yeah, that's the way Valerie's done it and other places, but I would say that for this kind of stuff, I wouldn't do a capital stabilization fund. We'd have to do a capital, like we'd have to put money into capital every year for an ambulance until we had enough money for an ambulance.
What does the state, what does the state allow? Because I thought the stabilization funds are the thing that you could.
You can, you can hold over capital for.
You can't.
Yeah.
If you, if you put it into a fund for a capital expense, and you say this is for the ambulance, so you can hold it that way.
Because then the only way we can spend it is that's the purpose of the stabilization fund, so.
But we're still waiting to.
Stabilization can be voted for, one, you can remove it from the capitalization plan and do it for something else because it's an emergency. And two, it doesn't identify the ambulance versus the police car, you know what I mean? I, I feel like it does, and I will say that, um, these, my concern is, um, and I, I can get this information from Joe and from Dave, is that they, the maintenance on these trucks right now, to keep them running for three years, what is that in comparison? Because Dave has come to me with leasing options a couple of times and I.
For the?
For the ambulance, and I said, please don't do that. It's cheaper to borrow the money at this time than lease.
But you're not buying anything or paying somebody for it.
So, um, so, so I can get those numbers, but for these two projects, I know that, that, that the cost, there is a cost to keeping the equipment we currently have.
You know what? I'd like, that's an important point. Did we get, did David come in here and talk about this with us? Did I miss him?
No, he didn't talk about, he just said, he did send us quite a bit of data on that he reviewed all the different ambulances and which ambulance he felt would be the best one. I don't believe that's in this package.
Well, I'd like to hear how bad our ambulance is given and the maintenance costs. I'd like to, is there a situation like that? I mean, to me, it comes up, to me, I like the notion of establishing a capital stabilization fund, you know, in some way or a project. I like the fact that we're not paying interest. On the other hand, if we have to pay out a lot of money to maintain equipment we ought to buy right now, we're throwing good money after bad, I'd like to hear how bad the situation is. In other words, if we go with that route and not borrow the money, how bad, what's the situation? Have we got information on the dump truck and everything that tells us, oh, we can wait another year or two? What's the cost in waiting another year or two?
I didn't ask that question. I, you know, the, these are, I said, I've banned our capital plans for years, but I, 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 I will ask.
And there's nothing saying we couldn't purchase one of them, Dan, certainly.
Right, and to go with your, also with you.
And set up a fund.
Well, if this was a serious situation, why don't you put this forward before the other ones that we just bought?
Well, I mean, I did recommend this.
You did.
Yes.
But.
So he may have done that based on.
You trying to go this way.
He trying to go this way.
Ah, gotcha. Okay, that's a good point.
Okay, well, we wanna put this one off?
Yeah, let me get on, so right now we talked about third possibility. There are three things going on here. I'm gonna use these terms loosely. The first is this as a sole item, that we're borrowing once just for this type of thing. The second is to use this as the foundation for a program to stabilize our borrowing on capital. Third thing was, instead of using.
Spending on capital, not borrowing.
Time out. The first one is to buy it right up front.
I think he was saying to borrow just for these items.
Borrowing just for this, it's a one-time deal. The, the third thing was establishing a program, use my word loosely here, to start. to start putting in from free cash, a chunk of change, a little chunk of change into a specialized, a dedicated stabilization fund.
Capital improvement fund.
Capital improvement fund. Well, it's not a capital stability, it has to be a...
Or cash, whatever you want to call it.
Okay, what that means is, we are pre-encumbering free cash. Now...
Well, we, every year, we have to put so much money into that fund. We still have them.
Now, our free cash is gonna be certified this fall. If we go with establishing that account right now, it's a penniless account, we're just creating a number or more.
Well, you could use these two numbers here.
The two top numbers. Because the ambulance fund exists, if we move it into stabilization account, it gives you the program establishment. Can we move it into that?
I would say that the ambulance fund has to be dedicated to an ambulance.
Right, but it goes into a capital improvement stabilization fund, with the purpose of showing a program is established for the body.
I think you just put it into capital expenditure for ambulance, and it takes so many years to get there, but like, it took them like four years to get to 90,000, or three years to get to 90,000.
But we could put a lot more in.
We could put 100.
Yeah, we need to put like 125 every year, is the problem.
All right, but what was your second? You said borrow just for this?
We use this as the foundation for a, I was using the term borrowing program.
Sort of like borrow 100 every year, even after these items are paid off to continue to borrow?
Doesn't that, even, even if we borrow, under the first one, borrow for this, the precedence is still set. It's not necessarily we're establishing it, but we are showing that we're gonna establish a borrowing program.
I don't, to me, I mean, I know that it's, because this is borrowing, it wasn't, in that mind, in my mind, I didn't necessarily mean it was borrowing, but what a capital funding source needs to say is that we spend this much money on capital.
Every year.
Every year.
And it's not subject to the fact that we don't have much instead of free cash, because last year, we had to put free cash funding into the regular budget just to balance.
We generally put a little chunk of it into stabilization to help our...
Well, we put that, but that's a good thing, we put money in that. So what she's saying is, we stop...
What would be the ambulance account? What would it be called? It's not a true stabilization fund.
It has to be an equipment capital account for the state to allow it to turn over.
Yeah, like you can have, you can have a capital, you can have, you know how like, when we have those holdovers that have been there for a long time? You can hold over capital for five years, I believe it is it? And so, or maybe it's three, I'll check with Valerie on that, but like, if it's in the ambulance fund, it doesn't close out into, into the, but you could put it, the problem with a stabilization fund is that it lumps everything together, and it doesn't identify specifically...
And then we can be appropriate to...
Right, and I don't...
You want this fund just for capital spending?
Just for capital spending.
But see, if we establish a borrowing for capital spending, it allows us to have the freedom within that program, to use your term, to borrow for different items, not just any ambulance. But we've established a program so that the bond rating agencies can see that we are establishing a capital improvement program that is ongoing. It's not just this year, maybe, next year, maybe not.
Could you, I think I understand. Could you follow up with the capital account? I'm not having a clear understanding of the mechanism, what the account will be called, and how it works, just to, because there is the idea, it is now, because that eliminates interest thing, that might be more palatable, but it doesn't get us out as a solution in this problem.
Well, I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear, because again, she, she said to Joe, look, I'll go this way, he probably didn't put it as one of his priorities, he thought he might get it this way. I'd like to hear from Joe how serious this is, I'd like to hear from David how serious this is.
So he asked you...
Can you wait two or three years until we fund it through this program? Or if we don't, and if we do wait two or three years, and we save all that interest, how much are you paying to keep them working? Because we're spending 20 grand on repairs, what the hell, we might as well buy it now, get a new one.
Invite the, I don't have to be here for this.
So what, you want us to invite, I'll invite the fire chief and Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to hear, and Melissa, and make sure they're here, and I'd like to hear, because I think that's the big item right now. Obviously, we can't buy all this now, we can buy maybe one item.
Buy one.
But then we're making a decision on it, and I'd like to hear how bad it is, and if it took four years to get to 92, obviously, we gotta do something for an ambulance, but an ambulance costs 220, we gotta do something. Four years is too long.
Actually, the way the mechanism would work, I don't think we can buy one item, what we have to do is cancel this estimate or put it on...
No, no. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no.
Time-wise, we're headed towards, you know, fiscally, a 14 anyways.
Right, because they can't, these are not, neither one of these items...
You said would be in this...
Yeah, because they can't, you can't go out and purchase one tomorrow, there's some lead time into that.
Well, what are you saying? Do you get the authorization for this? You're not gonna be able to use this year's funds for it?
The delivery will not be till, they can't, you can't walk down the street and buy an ambulance.
But can you hold over this money?
Sure.
The free cash, yes.
Yeah.
You can hold over until we pay for it, out of this year's funds, in order to borrow it. Okay. So are we gonna wait and get some...
So we'll bring the fire chief and public works director in.
Fill me in by email.
Okay.
And then we'll...
Bring it back up at the next...
Ask some homework. You can email me too, what you...
When you've gone, I mean, just...
Just that night.
Just that night.
Just that night. I mean, that's my son's birthday, I always make promises that take him on.
Let's go. Okay. We all agreeable then to postpone this till the 24th, until we get more information, and then we'll go from there? Sound good?
Okay.
I don't think we need a vote on it. And that's all our agenda items for tonight, and I would like to make them a...
Well, I have just to follow.
Sure.
Because the way I understand investors, is if they see our expenditures becoming more stable, that's why, that's what makes us more interested in our bond rating better. I think that's why she's coming this way. So we've got to find a way to make our capital expenses more stable versus our current, which is buy what we can afford each year.
Buy what we can afford each year, that's two hundred statements. Which, which to me is a terrible half to, statement to have to make, because if you're spending money you have...
You should have a better rating than if you have...
That should be a good rating, instead of borrowing...
No, you're not, you're not fully capitalizing what you have available, and so, that's what...
Well, they're worried that you're not investing in maintaining your equipment, maintaining your services.
Right. Maintaining the...
If they're gonna invest in you, they gotta know, hey, you're gonna keep things going.
Yep.
The town's not gonna fall apart, because you never want to buy a new ambulance or something.
More like an A1 or something better, or a B1 or something like that.
How are we now, bonded?
We're pretty, I just don't remember.
We're still an A?
It's minus, it's definitely minus.
Why did they drop us?
Well, I don't know, because it was dropped before I got here, but I mean, they dropped a lot of people.
You know, we've been doing this over here.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I just know that the mayor had said that it was down from what it had been, when we did the last time, and it, since I've been here, it's remained stable, and we, we got a better...
I've got a bond for the school.
The bond rating for the school went up, but that was not our bond rating, it's because I did that state qualified bond, which we attached to them.
Yep.
So, and that's why we did that, so that our, our rate would be slightly better, they're like one step above us. And so, there's a couple of things. One, spending one-time money to balance the budget is frowned upon by the rating agencies. So every time we take money in from stabilization to balance the budget, and then put it back the next year, that they, you know, they don't really like that, and our stabilization isn't as high as a percentage of our budget as they would like it to be.
Which is why I don't like spending on stabilization.
It's about half-funded, and another question they ask is, you know, what's your capital plan? And our capital plan is, we have a list of stuff we need. You know what I mean? I mean, it's a little more involved than that, but it's really not, it's like, this is the stuff that we need to do, but we...
We don't fund it, we don't have an ongoing funding mechanism.
Right, so, so what they look for is a percentage of your budget, to put in your budget, money to maintain your, your capital assets.
Now, you mentioned that the mayor was in favor, but what was his objection? He doesn't like borrowing either.
He doesn't like borrowing, he frowns upon it.
Gee, you and the mayor are on the same side, isn't that amazing?
And he said, I don't know, he goes, but this is your thing, and if you think you can get it by the council, then you try.
My God, that's a... That's ongoing, that's amazing. You let Melissa do something on her own.
Shit, that's unrecorded, that's why I recorded it. I actually think, whether the direction we end up, I don't like both, either direction.
Well, we have to establish a program, I'm in agreement with that. If, if these guys say to me, though, look, and if you wait another year, we might be coming back, you have an emergency, we need to buy a new ambulance, and we have to take it out of stabilization, or they say, yeah, I can keep the dump truck, but it's gonna take, you know, another 40 grand to fix it, I'm not happy with that now.
We need to get to a program where we're more proactive in how we do our buy or replacement versus we act if we have more money.
Exactly. But that, the concern I have, which is legitimate from Dan's point of view, is if we go to borrow and start a borrowing program, we have to be able to pay that borrowing out of the free cash or funding that we know we should have every year. The one year we don't have any free cash, it's a bad year. That 100 grand, or whatever the money we need, comes out of the budget. That means somebody's job is gone because of that, or something's gone.
And that's kind of what we're trying to do, because that applies to long pressure.
Right, but one of the things that I'm, I'm optimistic about is the fact that we've had a good track record of free cash. If we only get 100,000, we pay the bond, we don't buy anything else, but at least we have had a good track record, this year we had 900,000, I was shocked at that.
It was eight, it's nine, something like that.
Yeah, some of it was enterprise, but still, it's...
It was unusual.
Well, yeah, why do we have the year before? 500, 400? But still, enough to pay this? Huh?
Generally, I would want to...
That's point, and for averaging that, it's not a big risk. It's, it's always a risk, I see what your point is.
Okay, I guess we'll wait to hear from the department heads, report back to help the cost.
So he's not going on the 24th?
Right.
I can't make it to the 24th.
We'll talk to the department.
But there's no reason...
Hey, it sounds like it's gonna be a one-to-one vote.
No, because we'll wait till Justin goes back for a final vote, I think it's very important we just set up...
How, how, well, we can wait till May to decide this, right?
The only thing is that I would like, if I, if I need to come back so that evoke these two things into, so that this money holds over for these projects for next year as part of that, I need to get that, I mean, do I need to get another proposal in front of these, so you can pick one?
If we, if we vote the first meeting in May, a yea or nay on this, and let's say it's no, you come back immediately with what you want, we'll still get it in this first year.
That's what is important, because if the fiscally year closes, the free cash isn't available for us to appropriate...
So what she's saying is, the second meeting, our second finance meeting, we may be having to deal with this, along with budget, which is a, it's just a budget.
We can manage it.
Well, yeah, because if it's this, if she comes back with two items out of free cash